And our thoughts and prayers are with his family. So now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two on tonight's agenda, approval of October 20th, 2014 minutes. Moved by Vice Chair Barnes, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. Any corrections? None? I have some. Well, gotta get my arms and eyes working. Bear with me. All right. Let's see, on page three, line 101. It's a minor change, but if we can change the first sentence to read, it will be very important on an annual basis, that, as opposed to for. And then on line 108, on the same page, at the end of the page, the sentence that begins schools at, if we can insert the word that, so it reads, schools that at one time housed 600 students. On page four, line 193. I think it's just a spacing issue. It looks like the second bullet begins on the same line as the first bullet. If we can just correct that. And then on page six, line 256. If we can just add to that last sentence. They did not do an in-depth analysis of the two together because they felt the two could not be put together utilizing existing buildings. I think it clarifies that sentence. Page seven. Line 340. The N is missing in cop sync. Line 342. The word shooting should be plural. Uh, line, or page nine, line 399. I think it's clearer if the sentence is changed from being sent into a chat room, into that incident's chat room. They talked about logging an incident and, so you're not going to just any chat room. Page 10. Line 467. I didn't have concerns that there would have to be revisions. So if we could change this sentence to read, he envisions that there would have to be revisions to the existing emergency policies and procedures in the district, and then add the words, and that the training period would be the time to address those revisions. On page 11. Line 506. If we can just change board members to be MEMBERS apostrophe, for the plural possessive, and then line 509. Item B was the status of capital reserve fund. Line 528. I think it's more accurate if it reads that the school district repair fund had $126,000. A few meetings ago, the school board voted to use some of this money. So put that in the past tense. Same page, line 539. The word and should be an, take off the D. Line 542, the same page. If we could change this sentence to read, Chairman Wurtegas stated that one thing we have to look at through the budget cycle and preparation of warrant articles is what the plan is, dot, dot, dot. Page 12. Line 552. Administration should be singular. Line 582, on the same page. When the bleachers were installed in the school, as opposed to returned in the school. Yeah?
I think what she was referring to is that when they actually arrived to be installed.
Okay.
You know, it created storage issues.
Okay, so if we could say arrived to be installed, as opposed to, they weren't returned because they were never there, right? And then line 585, if we could just insert for clarity that the breast cancer fundraiser was a volleyball game she referenced. And I'm sure you're glad to know that's all that I had. So we'll put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the October 20th, 2014 minutes as amended signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Thank you. And that takes us to item number three on our agenda, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone looking to address the board under public participation? Seeing none, we will close public participation and we'll move to item number four, recognition of a Merrimack High School teacher. I will invite Merrimack High School Principal, Mr. Ken Johnson, and Merrimack High School teacher, Mr. John Vandecar, to the table. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for taking time out at the beginning for offering your moment of silence. That's most appreciated. This summer, I was given a tip by a staff member that the New Hampshire Lottery Commission, in conjunction with the New Hampshire Motor Speedway, was offering a very special award known as the All-Star Educator Award. Now, this award could have gone to anyone associated with our schools, and I was told, in fact, that over 1,000 applicants were submitted. The parameters to apply for this award was that it was supposed to be done without the knowledge of the person who was being nominated, and we were limited to 250 words. So I would like to read for you the letter that I prepared on behalf of this man, Mr. John Vandecar, who is in our tech ed department and was given the Merrimack School District 36 years. Dear Ms. McCann, please accept the following letter as a nomination of Mr. John Vandecar for your prestigious All-Star Educator Award. John Vandecar's career as an automotive and welding instructor at Merrimack High School spans 35 years. He has impacted hundreds of students, many of whose successes in life would not have been possible without his instruction and guidance. Mr. Vandecar's unique style of teaching excites a love of learning in students who do not experience success in traditional classroom, convinces them to remain in school, and urges them on to higher education so that they may achieve their goals. Students who otherwise would have left school without a diploma became engaged exploring careers rooted in his classes, inspired by his effective methods that promote life skills and lifelong learning. Many of his students have remained in Merrimack and now have children, uh, children entering MHS. Most assuredly, parent conference nights will always include former students who recall his courses favorably and who now encourage their own children to enroll in his classes before he retires, knowing that soon, many will miss the opportunity to build a car in his room, weld, or learn the inner workings of the combustion engine. Staff and students alike rely on his expertise when it comes to buying a new or quality used car. He is always willing to help out staff members who may not be able to afford costly repairs and turns those repairs into learning experiences for his students. Indeed, Mr. Vandecar will retire soon. He will be sorely missed by staff and students alike, and he will be leaving a unique, unprecedented legacy, a lifetime dedication and commitment to his students. So for the moment, I give you Mr. John Vandecar.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Merrimack, the town of Merrimack and the school board members and Marsha Frie for keeping a comprehensive high school up and going because every student has a different niche and we have a lot of students who need these alternative type of educational programs. So I commend you for this. Second of all, Ken. Ken and I have a very interesting relationship over the years. We've known each other for years. It's been great. Thank you for demonstrating faith and belief in me by nominating me for this award. I'm really humbled by the accolades you wrote in the nomination letter. I would also like to recognize my fellow staff members at the high school. We have a phenomenally good staff at Merrimack High School, and without their help, I couldn't have accomplished what I have. Have all sorts of meetings in the hallway with English teachers, math teachers, science teachers, the students not doing this, doing this, and they're very flexible because I kind of have an unusual teaching style. And they adapt. And the special ed department has spent endless hours with me with the amount of IEPs and 504 plans now, and through their guidance, it really helps me work with these children. As for the future, I am going to retire soon, and I just want to make sure that this goes on. My classes are a mixture of kids with different abilities, anywhere from, I've had students go to Harvard and kids go to the VOTEC and kids just do on-the-job training. Some of the students I work with do not find success in traditional classroom settings. That's why this comprehensive high school is so important. When these students see the other staff members working with me, they actually feel like somebody cares and somebody wants to see them succeed. And that's why the whole program works. I've asked Ken on a short notice for many things to keep it going and he takes care of me very well, and I appreciate that. All right, many of my students have gone on to build successful careers without doctorates and without MBAs, you know, just the average kid. And my feeling is, in the next 20 years, the majority of the jobs are going to be in the trades and craft industries. Thank you very much, Ken. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, John, and I have to say it's absolutely fitting that we chose this night and that today, and it was just today, that we received two checks that were written to the Merrimack School District and also to John Vandecar. One in the sum of $2,500, the other in the sum of $500 to put towards the program, which I know John hopes will go towards the vocational program at the high school. Again, over 1,000 people applied for this and we're very proud that the recipient of this very prestigious award, handed over by Governor Hassan, goes to Mr. John Vandecar. So thank you, thank you very much.
That's wonderful. I was wondering if there were any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Powell?
Nothing more than to say thank you. My father, just a little personal history. My father was a plumber and he had a very successful business and had hopes that I would take it over, but for various reasons, none of the which family doesn't work well together, that didn't happen. But one of the things that he did was he taught in the trade school. Excuse me, and my brother did as well to pass along the trade. So I agree with you, I think it is important that the trades are not forgotten because people are going to need car mechanics and car repairs farther down the road. So I appreciate the time that you've invested in this.
Ms. Gualyumi?
Yeah, and those are the kind of jobs that you can't outsource, so. Just a point for me, but I wanted to say thank you. Thank you for the service to Merrimack, to the children, and to the community.
You're welcome, it's been a pleasure.
And congrats.
I was wondering, Mr. Vandecar, you talked about, and Mr. Johnson alluded to your unique teaching style, and I think we use this table an awful lot of the times to learn from the people who come before us. And so I'm wondering if you'd be able to share with us some tidbits, or maybe you can, Mr. Johnson, of what that style is and how you reach the kids? Because it's so important to engage them.
Well, I have a curriculum, but we don't start on page one and finish on page 90. We take it as, I let them pick and choose what they want initially to get them going, to gain their interest. When I grade a kid, student, I don't, if you get a 50 on the first test, that doesn't stay there all the time. The grade I give is what they know when they leave my classroom for the last time. So if he gets a 50, a student gets a 50 on an exam, he can come in and make that up as many times as he wants. And if he gets us, and I don't average it, he'll get the highest grade. And same with welding. If you make a welding sample and it's just 75, you get a 75. If you want to come in after school, during a study hall, and practice more, you may, and you will get what you achieve. You know, your highest grade you'll, you can achieve before you leave my classroom is what you'll get.
Essentially demonstration of the competency, right?
Exactly, exactly. And I would add, I would describe John's teaching as intensely personal. And I would also say that he is remarkably humble. I know that, for example, even today, they were working on a vehicle for a woman who has very little means, and these kids have taken a vehicle that was in great disrepair and in the past couple of weeks have turned it into a well-functioning machine. And it took a lot of skill, a lot of time, and a lot of dedication, and a lot of passion. And I think that is what John personifies for Merrimack High School.
Well, on behalf of the district, I want to congratulate you on the award. Very well deserved. And along with the other board members, thank you for years of wonderful service to the district. And while you're not retired yet, we wish you certainly all the best in that retirement because it's well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That takes us to item number five on tonight's agenda, update regarding the Merrimack High School track. And I see some of the folks listed here and some perhaps not. Listed as folks are Mr. Brian Cornish, Principal Ken Johnson, Athletic Director Eric Sabian, Business Administrator Chevanel is at the table, Educator John Snell, who also serves as the track coach, and Mr. Tom Touso. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Why don't I just start off by saying, I think all of us have been around this track numerous times in the last few weeks. We've given some tours to board members. Tom recently had to have knee surgery. He's been around the track so many times, that's why he limped, he kind of limped up here. So we've, I've gained quite a good appreciation for the ins and the outs of track management and whatnot. It's something that, you know, sitting in central office, you just kind of take for granted. You just put it down and it's just there and it just kind of takes care of itself. But having, you know, seen the, how the elements behave, how a little hole can wind up being a really big problem, especially when you have lifting underneath there, that just kind of amazed me. So it was a great learning process for me and I won't hold up anything any further and I'll just turn it over to the more knowledgeable folk in front of me right here to talk about the Merrimack High School track. Thanks.
I'd like to start off with, what we do is, when we look at the track, we look at it in a couple different ways. We look at it as a surface that we run on. We also look at it as a area that we need to protect also. So when we're talking in light of tonight, we're not only talking of the track itself, we're also talking about some small improvements that we're probably going to need to do to protect our track in the future. Meaning that Brian here is, Mr. Cornish is, going to be addressing mostly your technical questions, but a couple areas I'd like to talk to you about, because when Matt and I lay out the CIP and we're talking in long range, we're saying, well, the track is this amount, but we think we need to do a few improvements. So we went out and we actually got some class for improvements that we need to address also at the same time. And a couple of that, a couple of the items would be, like, one would be drainage. Coming off the hill from the, from the school, there's a drainage issue. So we'd look to, to address that issue. Also, on the interior of the playing surface coming down by the pole vault area, there's water that drains off the sports field down onto the pole vault area that when we're doing the track, we probably want to address that issue at the same time. Two other quick areas that we're probably going to want to end up addressing is if you look at the straightaway near the highway end, we end up getting a lot of material onto the track. So we're going to have to redo probably the landscaping around that area too. And when you're coming between the two bleachers down to the track, there's also some material that pours onto the track that needs to be addressed. So there's a couple areas that we're going to have to address besides doing the track itself. So I'm going to turn over at this point to Brian and let him speak to you about a couple of different options that we have. We're going to talk about two options tonight. One option is the replacing the track as is, a six-lane track. And the other option is replacing it with a six-lane track, but making it eight, eight-lane straightaway. And the advantage of that is probably addressed better by Mr. Snell and probably Mr. Johnson on what that would do for our school and what kind of impact it has for us. But let me start off with Brian and ask him to speak to you in regards to the track, what he's thinking and what it needs.
Thank you all for having me down for a few minutes tonight to talk about this with you guys. Quick history, track was originally done before my time in this business, but not by too long. Original installation, 1999. So you've gotten 15 years out of a track surface, which is pretty good considering a late 90 installation. Over the last couple of years, we've been out in '09, '10, '11, '13, and again, a few weeks ago to make some ever-growing minor repairs that seem to be getting larger and larger. Track is definitely starting to show its age. When I look at a track that's 15 years old, that's starting to need some major patching, I, my first thought is, do we have any safety issues out here? Can we correct the safety issue so athlete is going to be able to have a safe spring track season? Probably, right now. But it's going to begin to deteriorate a little more rapidly over the next couple of years. Can never really guess how quick it's going to go or when it's going to go, but sometimes it just comes undone and you're left with a bit of a mess. There's a lot of delamination. Another term we use basically means the track surface is no longer stuck or adhered to the asphalt below. The weight of the system, there's so much rubber and glue that goes into these when they are originally installed. Oftentimes, we'll just kind of lay flat, and it's okay. Where we're starting to see it the last couple of weeks, when we came down for a visit, was in lane one, which is really our heavy-use lane. That's where every runner's going to try to get to regardless of the event. And honestly, people who are out for a walk in the afternoon for exercise will still try to get around as fast as they can. Lane one's starting to get pretty rough. We did a lot of, pretty significant patching a few weeks ago to try to address safety concerns. Some of the old patches were coming undone. Just kind of spider-cracking in the surface that's wandering and, you know, if you pick up an edge of it, you could go just about out to the end of the track if you wanted. So you guys are definitely in that timeframe of starting to get serious about thinking about it. You know, we've done a, a number of these projects over the past few years, full reconstruction, if you will. Things to be thinking about that I really don't have a lot of insight into is what the original construction was, the base materials, the gravels, the drainage. All those things are really important to the longevity of anything that's going to get paved in New England. The site test tells me things are pretty good because you don't see major asphalt cracking, which you would see probably in lane three or four, a paving seam, the weak spot on any paving. There isn't evidence of it yet, but it may also still be hidden by the track itself. At this point, reconstruction, you almost need to, you know, leaving the asphalt and going back on top with a new system would be very risky. Fifteen-year-old asphalt down there. Roads don't hold up very well. Granted, these aren't getting driven on like our roads, but to think you can get, you know, another 20-year, a 20-year track surface on top of 15-year-old asphalt you're pushing 35 years, you really got to start from the ground up. And that's where, you know, some, some probably minor testing, not my area of expertise, but soil testing, compaction testing, recon confirmation that adequate drainage for the site in general is in place, should all be forethought prior to getting into something. This is a big project, it really is. I think you've got the good bones out there to, you know, put in a new track that's going to hold up another 15 or 20 years.
Great.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Snell to. At this time, could we have Mr. Snell address the needs of the school as far as the different surfaces that we're thinking of?
Sure.
I don't think so, Mr. Snell. Just pushing.
Let me begin by saying that in the spring, in track, track season between the middle school and high school, there's about 200 students out there every day using it. And so it does get quite a bit of use. And we have a six-lane track. It's a design that's called a broken-back design. There's only a few in the world. I think the, there's one in Sweden and it fits there because of the footprint of the, the school. We can't go underneath the power lines, so we have to, we have a wide curves, which makes the kids run faster. Actually, it's one of the fastest tracks in the state. And in the past 15 years, we've hosted six Division One meets and two meter champions. And the NHIA double A loves coming here because of the parking and the easy accessibility. And we've had the largest gate ever for a track meet here at Merrimack High School, just to let you know. That's according to Mr. Corbin, who's the former head of the NHIA double A.
who's the former head of the NHIA double A. Right now, we like the idea of going to the six lane oval and the eight lane straightaway. The NCAA, USA Track and Field now recommends that you run eight person finals. And we can only run a six person final now because of a six lane straightaway. Basically what that means, if you don't know that much about track, is in the dash and the hurdles, they'll do trials. And the top eight athletes will advance to a final later in the day. And therefore, you have the opportunity for them to, to go head to head against each other. And we, we've been running six person finals, but we would like to run eight person finals, which will enable us to host even more big meets. And I think, I agree with what Tom said about having to do some site work because we've been battling all the dirty water from the back of the school, running on the track for fifteen years, sweeping it off, blowing it off, putting it back on. I've been out there, I don't know how many times, shoveling wheelbarrows full of sand from the track just because it, the drainage was putting it on there. But that's what, you know, I think would be best for the students and for the town. And I, I think of the students first.
Well, nothing truly additional to add, other than I've had the opportunity, obviously, to make several trips around the track, including a recent trip with the school board co-chair, Shannon Barnes. I mean, even to a layperson, you can see that things have fallen into disrepair. I do want to thank Tom and John and Brian for keeping me informed every step of the way. But I think if any one of you had the opportunity to walk the track, that you would know that there is some immediate, short-term work that needs to be done and then perhaps a long-term decision that needs to be made.
Superintendent.
So really, tonight was about bringing important people to your table to be able to not only gain information, but also get into a discussion about the track. Because as you remember, we have it on the capital improvement plan. It just, it wasn't something that was going to be addressed for the year fifteen sixteen. However, upon observation, reflection, discussion, the item surfaced, if you will, to the top to be looked at more carefully because we have it placed currently in the year sixteen seventeen. So what I am needing you to do is to ask as many questions as you can come up with. If we don't have the answer tonight, we'll get them for you. Because I need guidance from you to know whether you wish to have this included in this budget or not. It can be put as an outside item to be discussed further. But it also helps Matt and I to figure out about the bottom line and where we are, if we include it or if we don't. So that's the point in tonight, is to really take advantage of Brian being here because he really has knowledge of the building of the track. John has been about being a track coach for how many years?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. So the important thing when we were with John is to hear about the history and to know it's a special track, given the configuration. I mean, that was just unknown to me. Lots of things are unknown, but that was definitely an unknown. And Ken obviously has been observing and, and Tom and Matt have been in care of it. So we really have critical people here with whom I hope you'll have a discussion to help guide us.
Thank you. So with that, why don't we open it up for that discussion? Vice Chair Barnes.
I have questions for a bunch of you, actually. First, I know that you talked about option one, option two, Tom. Option one having just the six lanes and option two being the ideal for major meets, having the, the eight lane straightaway with the six lane oval. And I guess, what's the cost differential between the two options?
They range. And what we did is we went out and we received some engineering on the difference from option one to two, not including the track, but just what we need to do to prepare the soil to really get a good feel. And it was quite, honestly, it was more than I thought it would be. It was quite a bit more than I thought. In bare numbers, option one is at this point looking at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And option two, we're looking at four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. There's a considerable difference from option one to two. Option one includes the improvements that I mentioned before, the drainage off the hill, the drainage on the track, the end of the track that's closest to the highway, the entry point between the two bleachers. The, that option alone is roughly, and this is rough numbers, just, and I think it could get down a little bit more than that, but we got a nut finger, figure of forty-eight thousand for that. The other option is, once we go to the eight lane straightaway, we'd have to build a retaining wall, move stuff back. Gets quite a bit more expensive. That option came down to a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the site work, prepping it, making sure everything was up and running. So that's the biggest difference, is the, basically the retaining wall and the additional site work done.
And on that note, will there be benefits with the site work being done to the football field?
No.
So there, there's no benefit, doesn't, the drainage doesn't go to, all the way to the field then? It really stops at the track?
Yes, it's right at the track.
Okay, and then my question's going over to Mr. Snell for a bit. I know you talked about NHIA meets and that we have the potential to have the biggest meets in the state. But we're not having them now, based on the condition of the track.
That's correct.
And what was the last time we had?
We, we hosted a two thousand and eleven Division One meet and meter champions.
And how many meets a year do we have the potential to host?
Right now, we usually have between three and five dual meets. And we have the Merrimack Invitational, which has been running for fourteen years, which we host on the second Thursday of May.
And that's, so you're talking five or six a year?
Right. And plus the middle school has another three or four meets out there.
So that's ten.
Right. And I neglected to mention that we've also hosted the middle school state meet three times.
And that's, but we haven't done that recently because of the condition of the track.
Correct.
So we're losing all the opportunities to, to host. And with that, I guess now I'm going to Mr. Johnson, so I might come back to you.
Sure.
What kind of revenue can we gain from hosting these meets?
I couldn't give you real numbers, but that, I know you and I discussed that and I discussed that with John. We know that when we do host, it's, as when we host commencement, we know that when all the people converge here, we know that they're going to utilize all the local businesses, eateries, you know, convenience stores and so on. So no doubt by hosting, we bring a lot of revenue directly into the town.
Definitely, but do we have, are there fees to host? Or do you get a, do we, does the school get a fee from NHIA, whatever?
Uh, no. What, the way it works is the NHIA double A takes all the gate fee and then they use that to pay the officials.
Okay.
Out of that, and they pay for the timing services and all that. And any money that's left over goes into the NHIA double A budget, I would assume.
Gotcha. But I know that I've been to football games and I see people selling like food and stuff. And that's Merrimack revenue.
That's correct.
So we are losing revenue by not having...
Yeah. Our Booster's Club has done very well, just running the snacks by the, they've done quite...
Well, the football, the football game, they ran out of cheeseburgers at one point, I know that.
I mean, and when we hosted the meter champions in two thousand and eleven, they, Sal's couldn't make enough pizza for us to sell.
Wow. So we're really leaving a lot on the table by not being able to host at this point.
Apparently, yes.
So, and, and the booster stuff goes into supplies and like uniform type stuff, that kind of stuff?
Yep. Equipment supplies. They, they actually pay for some extra coaching stipends so we can have as many adults as possible working with the students.
So that's all lost opportunity as well?
Correct.
Okay, and John, I'm going to ask you to give me, I told you to be back. Can you give me an idea of the difference between what you could do with a, a six lane oval and, and oval with the eight lane straightaway? Because I know that's a considerable cost difference to...
Yeah. It has to do with just the number of participants getting into the finals of the meet. If you have a six lane straightaway, you can only pick six for the finals. And if you have an eight lane, you can pick eight. And right now, the, there's change in the scoring charts for the big meets. I think it's going to hit the high schools either the next year or the year after, whether they'll be scoring eight places. Currently, they only score six places right now. And if we didn't have an eight lane track and they went into scoring eight places, which they're doing in college right now, we would not be able to host like the, the class meets and things like that because we couldn't provide the, the scoring opportunities.
That's important.
I think so, yes.
Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Powell.
Well, tacking along Ms. Barnes' last question, are there any, I'm assuming there are schools in New Hampshire that have eight lane tracks. How many are there, roughly?
Um, I know both national schools have an eight lane track. Londonderry has an eight lane track and...
Bedford?
I think Exeter has an eight lane track and I think Bedford's is eight lane also.
The only reason I ask is because it's practically brand new, but I assume that they would do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Manchester Memorial also has one.
Okay. So it's not unheard of to have, this isn't something that's brand new?
Um, it's something that they started doing about twenty years ago. That's where it came in.
Okay. If we were to install the track now, is there any issues with doing the field later on as, as far as damaging the track?
Um, sure, yes. I mean, the, the easy answer is yes. Obviously, in general, you want to work from your inside out.
Sure.
It has been done. I've heard the stories of bridging the track surface with high beams.
Okay.
But you can only imagine the amount of material that comes out of a natural turf field. I mean, hundreds and hundreds of yards of material and then it's got to go back in. There's a lot of earthwork to be done to convert to artificial turf.
Okay.
So the answer is yes, it can be done. Inevitably, there will be damage. Will it be damage that costs you two, three, four years on your track life? Probably not. You know, with proper protection taken ahead of time, all the contractors involved, being aware that, you know, this may be a two-year-old track surface. We've got to do everything we need.
So it would be easy to, to mitigate the damage?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. Wintertime, is there any sort of protection? Is there covering or something that we might be able to put over the track?
No. Wintertime protection is do not plow it.
Okay. Talked about the, the, the rough cost. Now, Tom, you touched on having to do a retaining wall if the eight lanes were put in. Is, is there any other work? Do the bleachers have to be relocated, anything like that?
No. The, what we would do is put the retaining wall, move the fence back and redo the swale and the walkway between the two bleachers. But where the bleachers sit would be where they would be.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to move that or...
So not a huge refit would have to be done?
Correct.
Okay. Timeframe, how much, what kind of time are we talking from start to finish?
It's going to take the bulk of the summer.
Bulk of the summer, okay. But it, but it can't, I'm sorry?
Ten weeks.
Okay, but it would be, if you were to start on July first, you would be able to have it finished by the time football season comes around?
I say yes, every time. We are the football coaches' worst nightmare come preseason. Because every day it rains in the summer, we lose a day.
I can't imagine why.
But the answer is yes. You get on the schedule early and it's, it's certainly doable.
Okay. I believe, yep, that's, that's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tussaud, did you want to add something there?
Back to the schedule, what probably would impact Brian, one of the biggest reasons is when he knows, notification. We couldn't wait until later in the season or almost before the summer before we start. He'd have to know as soon as he could or at least think that we're heading in the right direction. I guess that's why we're here.
You know, we, I put in running track surfaces and I help, you know, guide the process along. We don't pave, you know, we don't do earthwork in this kind of a scale, but we work with people that do. So not only do we need to get us, and we're kind of the last guys in, we just put the surface down to stripe, but the amount of work that goes in before that, that's really the chunk of time that it takes. So you've got to get a number of different contractors lined up and scheduled. And no matter how hard I try, it's tough. It's tough to keep people on schedule when, when everybody gets busy in the summer.
You don't know Tom.
I don't know.
Or Matt.
I think he does. Any other questions? Mr. Schneider.
Yeah, so, so thanks for coming tonight. I had the pleasure of walking the track on a wet day. So it was, it was real interesting to go and find where you see the spidering cracks and you step on it and you see things bubbling all around it. So one of my fears is, I looked at all the areas that you patched recently and some of the corners are very interesting. It's sort of like looking, one of the patch stretches of the Southeast Expressway, you know, the way that they're done. But I'm concerned about the places where the delamination, you can see that's starting already that we haven't been addressed. Does it reach a point where patching starts to become? I mean, right now, it's potentially a, a safety risk if they start to come delaminated with all the traffic. Has it ever become a problem where there's too much patching that goes on? Where the surface becomes uneven, untenable to be able to run on?
Um, yeah, you know, when, we, we were doing some pretty large or long stretches, not necessarily wide, but this is all trowel patch. So figure as, as close as you can get it with a trowel this wide. You know, patching is kind of a unnecessary evil. These, these tracks get dinged, they get whacked with the mower, they get football cleated, so we, we do it a lot. But it's not a permanent, larger scale correction that we like to try to make. At this point, with the track you guys have, it's, it's really to address safety concerns.
Right.
And, you know, we could get into far more extensive ideas of repair, which I think would probably be poor use of money.
Yeah, it's like taking a twenty-year-old car and sinking a lot of, you know, more than it's worth into it.
Tom and I started having that conversation probably two years ago on, you know, where's the value, the, the money you're going to put towards it? What's, are you getting value out of it if you go with another resurfacing, which, you know, there really would be no guarantee of because nothing's really stuck anymore? We're going to try to stick new stuff to something that's not stuck and it's probably a recipe for disaster.
Right. And when, when we were walking, talking to Tom and Matt, because that's who was with me when I walked it, it's a, it's a little bit of a crapshoot as to what the, what toll the winter will take on the track. If it's a, you know, if it gets covered with snow and stays frozen all winter and thaws really quick, probably minimal impact. But if you get one of those hot then cold and wet then not and things like that, it could be more. So, you know, you're looking for early, the earlier the better notifications to what we do. The, the problem is, is if, if we're on the fence at all from a capital perspective and we decide to wait or something, then the die is cast. We've sort of bought into the, to the repair and things along that line. So the other question I had is, so this track was built in ninety-nine. Has the material or the longevity of the material improved since that? What, what we're working with now versus what we would get?
I don't know. And I, I did look through my notes. I believe it is a similar California product surface that was installed back then. I don't know if their formulas changed. I don't know if their formulas changed, I could make a phone call and, and figure that out real quick. I know our methods and techniques continue to improve. You know, the way I first installed them in two thousand and four is similar, but, you know, we're a lot better at it now. If we weren't, we wouldn't be.
The only, the only reason I ask is, is the guy sitting next to you is the master of roofs. And, uh, he's, he's not only sort of the, the sage of being the, the roof whisperer, trying to look at the way roofs are holding up, but also in terms of getting new roofs and trying to get the best bang for our bucks so we invest the money and we get a whole lot longer longevity out of it. So, you know, when you do something like a track, he asks the same questions.
And, you know, there's aspects of, of what Tom was talking about that he got out of the architect engineer, um, folks that will help improve the future longevity of a new track surface. You know, some of the, the shed down from the parking lot or bleachers, it's just not good to introduce that amount of silt and dirt and sand to a track system that nestles its way down and just starts to eat away at that initial bond.
Sure.
Um, I, I do believe that field irrigation has caused some of it. Um, the sprinkler heads really pound, pound the track.
Mm-hmm.
Inside lane, one or two, um, and that's not ideal. You know, they're, they're all weather track systems, but they're not designed to be saturated constantly. So, you know, site improvements will help and it's stuff you almost have to learn, you know, the first time around and then you can be better the next time around. And I think there, not only will a new track surface do better than, than this one that was installed in ninety-nine, but, you know, peripheral improvements as well is just going to make it a, a better facility in the long run.
I think I'd like Brian to take a second here and describe what exactly he's going to do to this track. You're going to grind the asphalt underneath, uh, how far that goes down. He's going to spray, but how many layers is he going to spray? And, and something like that, that I, I probably wouldn't be able to give to you in the depth that he can, if you can expand on that.
Yeah, the, the general process, my first recommendation was, um, and again, this is prior to any soil testing, compaction testing, drainage knowledge at all. My eyes tell me there's probably a fairly stable gravel base out there. Um, my suggestion being probably the most economical route for a project of this size. Strip off the track surface, haul it away in dumpster, nobody wants it. Pulverize the asphalt that's there. Mill it, it's not milling, it's pulverizing, grinding, grinding down to basically a usable gravel material. They say in general, if you pulverize three inches of asphalt, you'll end up with five inches of gravel. So that alone will bring up the, the entire plane of the track. Um, the field over time always encroaches over the inside edge of the track, creating an artificial dam, kind of preventing adequate drainage for the track system. So all this is designed to get the thing up in the air a little bit. Add a little bit of gravel, probably on top of the asphalt, because I do believe it blends better that well. Recompact it, uh, laser grade, which is, you know, pretty, it's worth going out and watching these little rigs, they're pretty good. New pavement and then new track surface, which we offer three different levels, kind of a three-eighths entry level, if you will, which you guys have. And we probably install in Maine, eighty-five percent of our tracks are three-eighths inch in New Hampshire, maybe fifty percent. And then there's the next step up, still being a black track, goes to a half inch, five-layer system to a seven-layer system. And then we do colored tracks. Um, but the, the price of rubber, colored rubber really jumps. Uh, black rubber is a byproduct of the recycled tire industry. They're looking for a reason to use it up, uh, you know, maybe thirty-five cents a pound. The red rubbers, the blue rubbers, the green rubbers of the world is, it's actually a manufactured product specifically for that. At a dollar thirty a pound and you guys would probably be in the neighborhood of, oh, eight, nine thousand pounds per layer. So it, it jumps exponentially. Can you bring a couple of samples? If you'd like to put your hands on them.
Sure.
Pass them, pass them down the road. These both represent half-inch.
Okay.
So, entry level would be two layers shy of this.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that the, the half-inch potentially would hold up better than the, the three-eighths?
Um, where you're going to, what you're going to get out of it is performance to the athlete. G-max force reduction, the pounding these kids take, or anybody when you're out running, uh, there's, there's more question to it. Uh, it's got more material to wear certainly, but, you know, wear is not necessarily a great thing just because you have more, because you'll have dishing in the lanes.
Mr. Cornish, can, can you just make sure either your microphone's on or you're speaking into it?
Sorry.
Thank you.
There, there's certainly more material on a track surface, it's half-inch and will provide a more wearable surface, but it still will deteriorate and need to be dressed up over time.
Thank you. Are you all set, Mr. Schneider?
One other really quick question, so I saw where the patches were.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at the patches close enough, you can actually, sometimes they blend right into the others. And other times there's like a line that's there that, that obviously is a side effect of the way you trial it on. Is, is there any issue, like, when, when you put this in, does it blend at the lower level so the water doesn't seep? Because when you looked at it, it almost looked like there was a line where the, the water could seep in or something, so.
Yeah, when we do our patching, we actually use a different, we use the same rubber and a different adhesive that honestly works better in cooler temperatures. If we find a rotten spot, if you will, we'll take a knife and try to cut a straight edge and that's probably the, the seam you're seeing possibly.
But the adhesion goes, there's no issue with the water seeping between the existing track and the repaired?
No, these track surfaces, these in particular, are designed to accept rain, moisture through them, down to the asphalt and shed inward with the pitch of the, of the pavement as well as evaporate back out.
So if that's the case, so if, if the, if the track is designed to let the water seep through, so what's really happening is is the adhesive is the problem underneath? Is, is that the problem?
That initial bond of initial layer of rubber and asphalt, that adhesive, um, has, has really deteriorated and significantly over the last couple of years. And spots, I mean, there's still spots out on that track that are stuck well and, and perfectly fine, but, you know, it seems like those spots are losing out to the, uh, to the not-so-good ones these days.
All set, Ms. Guayumi?
Um, so what I'm hearing is we've kind of lost some opportunities to host some meets because of the quality of the track over the last couple of years. Um, and what I'm trying to understand is, is it mostly due to safety? Or is it, um, I guess maybe if we could talk a little bit more about, you know, that lost opportunity and why we're not hosting if it's, it's a safety issue primarily.
It is very much a safety issue. Um, back in two thousand and eleven, we were hosting the Division One meet here. We had to move the high jump mat and stop the meet because where the students were turning the corner and getting ready to jump, at the middle of the meet, it ripped up. And so fortunately, we had the big high jump apron, so we had to stop the meet and we moved the mats over to the, the other side of the track. And that's when we first noticed that it was delaminating. And then there were several other instances where the kids would be, you know, big, strong athletes are running hard, turning a corner and they're digging their spikes and it's just, you can see pieces of the track coming up. So at that time, we didn't think it would be prudent to, uh, continue to host those meets.
So I had noticed that I went for a walk before the patching had happened and I had seen, I think, a little bit about what you're talking about and how it kind of looks like there's just a crack.
Right.
In the track, but if you, something catches it the wrong way, it can actually move quite a bit.
Oh.
Like an accordion kind of a.
Exactly, right. And the high jump, that meet, it looked perfectly fine. All of a sudden, one big kid went right around the corner and it's a big chunk, probably about a square foot came up. It was like, hmm, we can't keep them here.
So the patching has been made and I just wanted to get your opinion, um, obviously we have to endure a New England winter. I know there, that's kind of a, a wild card, you know, as to how, as we discussed earlier. But just your confidence level that it would be ready for this, that it would be safe in the spring on a scale of one to ten, with ten being the most confident, that we're going to have a safe track for our kids. What are your, what are your thoughts and I understand that there's no exact science to this?
Right now it's safe. That's all I can say. And I could, you don't have any control over the weather. I think that they've done enough patching that we probably would be able to, to host our meets in the spring. And I know in the past, we've gone out there when the snows melt and I've walked it with Tom and he said any places that need to be patched and we got, I think, what do you need, three good days in a row to patch it?
Well, hopefully it's not that extensive.
Yeah, and just, you know, we have to, have, has to not rain for a couple of days and they come in and patch it.
It's weather, but yeah, we, you know, we'll come down and make sure you guys are safe for the spring. It's not the patching that's not going to hold up, it's what's right next to it.
Okay.
That's going to continue to.
Right, it's so, if it's deemed not safe and you're monitoring it, there can be some other patching.
Yeah, if there's, if there's safety issues, Tom will call us and we'll make sure we get down ahead of meets.
I think at this time, we would definitely revisit it in the spring. I mean, certainly we rely on, uh, the coaching staff, John Snell, who's always willing to give me a call, uh, Eric Sabian, our A.D., that will, uh, come out and say, Tom, let's, let's take a walk and we'll, we'll take a walk and make sure that the, uh, track is in safest condition as we can make it. Um, I would anticipate that before anything happens to spring, we will be doing one of those walks. Uh, not just because I think it's going to make it through, but because I'm pretty sure that we will probably end up with some issues over the winter. And I would not feel comfortable at this point to say that we could not walk it. We, we need to walk it before the spring season starts.
And, and my concern would be if it's not safe enough to host, you know, for other meets, which maybe it will be in the spring, then it, it's not safe enough for our students now. So that, that's where I, I, safety is a big issue for me, um, so that's important. And then it, the other question I had was regarding the quotes for option one or option two. And I just want to confirm, um, that you're saying that the asphalt fault piece of the project is part of those quote dollars?
Yeah, yes, the, um, you know, I sent Tom some numbers a week ago, um, that I think some of Tom's numbers and mine overlap.
There might be some overlap.
Um, but yeah, the numbers I provided to Tom a week ago include all-new asphalt on everything, runway, long jump, triple jump, pole vault, high jump area.
Okay, and then one more question and it's literally kind of more of a weird, you know, maintenance question. But, um, the football field is right in the middle of the track, as you know. And what type of, um, or, or what is needed or what do we do or what should we do or, um, to protect the track when you have people with cleats basically having to get across that track? And there's also a sign like at the track that says, you know, no cleats, no balls, no, all of this other thing. Is there like a certain, I noticed there is kind of a strip at one area, is that like maybe the good place to walk or is it not that hazardous to have it from time to time or?
There's a handful of different crossing mat, uh, protect, track protective items. Um, the one we've, I think you guys have some kind of a heavy-duty urethane rollout mat, which we've almost gotten away from selling at all because they're so heavy and cumbersome that they go out, uh, for the first football game and they don't come up until maybe, in general, not saying specifically here. Um, maybe don't come up until before winter. We've got, been selling one from Airflow is the company. It's a real heavy-duty fabric with a vinyl, vinyl perimeter and chain link is actually the ballast. It comes, you know, seven and a half feet wide by thirty feet long, spans the track, gets the football kids across. I think they're, you know, in the five hundred dollar neighborhood. Also what you want to use to get your mowers across. And there's, there's things out there that should be used, definitely.
And right now we do have two crossing points across the, uh, track. And I'll let Mr. Snell speak about it, but, uh, when we go to mow, we do cross on mats that we go across.
Actually, there's one for the visiting team and one for the home team to actually walk out on the track. And it's a product that's called Instant Runway, which we bought from MF Athletics. It's extremely heavy, we, we'll roll it up when the football team is done and it is, it's extremely heavy, but it does protect the track and the football teams are very good about walking on that. We haven't had an issue with football at all.
Okay, great, I had to ask the question because I stood there seeing the field and trying to anticipate how that works, so I appreciate it. Thank you, because I have no further questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Powell, you had your hand up, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. What kind of a warranty would be on the, the track once it's installed?
California Products brochure, they provide five-year warranty on their materials. We provide a five-year warranty on our workmanship, so.
Okay.
Five years.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? If there are no further questions, I think, uh, we should undertake the question that the superintendent posed, which is, um, a desire or not to see the track, uh, on the budget for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Mr. Powell?
Yeah, I, I think we do need to have our options laid out in front of us. Included, I would personally would like to see it included, um, with this upcoming budget for fifteen, sixteen. I, I think we have more than demonstrated the need for it. You know, I, I have the same concern as my fellow board members, I'm sure, is, are we, we be okay getting that far? You know, the springtime come, are, are we going to be okay? That's my concern right now, um, is to make sure we're, we're putting a, a safe, usable surface out there for our, um, athletes. Um, but I would definitely, um, want to take a look and, and do everything we can to get this into the upcoming budget. That's, that's just my opinion.
Yes, Superintendent.
I, I just want to clarify, and if you had your druthers, you alone, um, are you favoring option one or two?
I don't know, um, to be honest with you.
It's fair.
I, I, I would like to be able to get us up to, um, you know, the same level as some of the other school districts in the, in the state, but there's a big difference. Um, so I, I would have to, I would have to think about that.
Okay. Uh, anyone else, Vice Chair Barnes?
And I actually lean toward option two because of the opportunities it brings to the district that, um, what John said that made a lot of, a lot of impact to me is the eight-lane straightaway has been out for twenty years and the NHIA is leaning toward an eight-lane, uh, final. So I, I see us getting more opportunity for more meets if we have the ideal environment to host those meets, which brings a lot of opportunity to Merrimack. So I think it might pay for itself in the long run.
Okay, Mr. Schneider?
So I'm a proponent, if we're going to, if we're going to undertake this, let's undertake it the right way. So for me, it's, it's going with the eight-lane only because it provides the biggest flexibility. Yes, it's more expensive, obviously, but we only do this once every twenty years or fifteen or whatever the number is. I, I really want to see the detail of exactly what we think the cost will be in terms of all the different aspects. Maybe a, a, one of your great, not roofing pictures, but a picture on the track where you see the wall being, where you see the drainage put in, things along those lines there. Um, I know that we talked in the past about the risks of doing the, um, track first and the field second and how the field at some point in time, if, should it be done, would need to have drainage away from the field. So one of the things I'd like us to take into account too is when we construct the, the track, is there any piping we could lay underground in anticipation of doing a field so we don't have to rip it up later? Because once the track's down, protecting over the top is one thing, but also then if they go, well, you know, if you want this field, whether it's turf or whether it's more grass, we reconstruct it, you want to have drainage going out, is there something we need to do to just lay dummy pipe on either, underneath it so we don't have to dig it up?
No, if I may just, a lot of that drainage is actually designed for the track on those synthetic turf fields. They're designed to take water on like you wouldn't believe. Um, so you'll see that interior slot drain is what we call it on the inside edge of lane one. And that really is there for the track.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and that could probably be very easily saw cut and installed post-new track surface. But those fields are designed to drain straight down at an unbelievable rate.
Mr. Chevanel, you wanted to add some?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, add some input. Uh, Tom, uh, had a consultation with, uh, Keach Nordstrom Associates. Peter Julia, is that the person you met with or was it Steve?
No, Pete.
Pete, okay. Um, so if you're, you're seeing pricing that's higher than was originally proposed on the capital improvement program, it includes those improvements in drainage along the front straightaway, um, along the pole vault area. If you remember, I think Andy, we saw the, or Mr. Ortega, we saw the, the pole vault area with the, uh, standing water and I think the koi pond going in it. Um, also some drainage improvements, uh, the stairs to the railings. And then the option two, which is the eight-lane track, it includes all that and it includes the, the retaining wall because you're closer to the stands. And then on top of the training wall, the retaining wall, that's where you would place your fence. So it includes all that, um, pricing, um, inclusively. As we get down to it, we may refine, but I think we're rather comfortable from a budget, budgetary standpoint with these numbers. I wouldn't hesitate to use them for budget purposes. There's one comments that I did hear about the existing field that, uh, I know the top, the, uh, topography out there and, uh, you know, basically what's, what's underneath it, and Tom can kind of verify that for me, is, uh, there's a lot of sand out in that area. Because I recall when we were building the, uh, white maintenance facility, I don't think we hit anything larger than, uh, a little pebble and it was all sand. So the drainage in the existing underlayment or geography or geology of the track, uh, not the track, the field itself right now is very good and it drains very quickly. Am I correct, Tom?
Yeah, and at this point, there is four drains out on the field. It's, there's a swell that surrounds the football field. Everything drains right off the football field now into the swell and there's four catch basins that are carried out and it's underneath the track now. So there is drainage out there at this point in time.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to be sure that we were prepared for it because last thing you want to do is get caught and have to, have to cut the track. I think that's something that nobody wants to do there, so that's great.
Ms. Guayumi?
I'm also supportive of the, um, putting it in the budget for the fifteen, sixteen year.
year, right? And I, I, I'm a little on the fence between the two. Is, and I'm just wondering if maybe the six lane is just becoming obsolete more and more, and if that's the case, then I'm supportive of the, of the eight lane straightaway with the six lane oval. So if it's becoming an obsolete thing that fewer and fewer places are putting in, then maybe it makes sense to do. But I'm leaning towards the six, the eight lane straightaway.
I was just going to say, when we had our discussion, I think what we were trying to do is do visioning and realize that we're talking about fifteen years out as, at a minimum, with the idea, I think, when we talked all together, our hope would maybe be that we could stretch beyond fifteen, maybe seventeen or eighteen. So it's that, I mean, obviously it happens with you right now, but the fact of the matter is we're going way out.
Right.
So if you go with six lanes, we're like in the immediate. That's the thing. It's a, it's a lot to swallow, but I think we were just trying to do projection and what might it yield? And you've already come up with that, but we came up with it in our discussion as well. What will it yield?
Yeah. Are you all set?
Yeah.
And I'll share my thoughts. I, I too support seeing it in the budget. For, for me, it, it boils down more to safety than the opportunities to host meets. I agreed very much with what Ms. Gualyumi said. If the track isn't safe enough for other people's kids, it's not safe enough for ours. The idea of hosting a meet and increased gates, while that sounds great, it's not going to pay for the track if the NHIAA is getting all those gate receipts right after paying the officials. We've got to sell an awful lot of slices of pizza to, to pay for this track. Yes, people will visit other businesses, but again, that, that's an indirect benefit and it's not going to cover the track. I think it will boil down in terms of the options for me, in terms of what really the future is, and it sounds like, you know, we're, we're really moving toward an eight lane track. And so I think breaking it down in the budget and having those options and giving the board time to research more about this and, and understand what the implications are twenty years from now, if we still have a six lane track versus an eight lane, I think would be helpful. So we want to do that. And I would just add this, when I was walking the track with Mr. Chevanel and Mr. Tussaud, I shared with Mr. Tussaud something that I, I'd like to share publicly because we put him on the spot quite often to say, how much more can we get out of this roof? Do we really need to do it next year, or do we need to do it in two years? Could it last us five more years? And what Mr. Tussaud does is what I think any fiscally conservative and, and responsible person does, is tries to maximize the life of all of the assets that we have here, recognizing that, you know, when we ask him that question, it may come back to haunt him a year later when adverse conditions have, have changed something. It's hard enough to do with, you know, the used car in your driveway and the roof on, on top of your house. When you think of all the assets that we have in the district, he's really trying to, to get the most out of them, and, and I think that's what's been done with the track. So I thank you for, for doing what you do, and instead of simply hitting a clock timer when a roof reaches twenty years, getting, getting the absolute most out of it. And I apologize that we continue and probably will still put you in that spot, but appreciate what you're doing to be fiscally conservative for us. I saw a hand go up. Mr. Snyder?
Just to, and the more I think about this, more it's a silly question, but we made such a big deal of the increased cost by creating the eight lane straightaway near the bleachers, right? Because you gotta do the retaining wall. The obvious second thing was, we'll put the eight lane stretch on the other side of the track where it's all wide open and you've got nothing prohibited. Unfortunately, it means that if you're trying to watch from the bleachers, you need binoculars to see the hundred meter, hundred yard dash, or hundred meter dash, or whatever like that. So, I mean, it, it would be good just for edification to know what the cost difference would be ballpark, not, you know, what we would save by not having to do it right there. Because I know logistically, because it's so close to the, to the bleachers, there's extra work you gotta do to cut in and build a retaining wall and stuff which are there, so.
There may be another option out there too. Pinkerton Academy?
Yeah. I can, on the other side, it falls off right away. There's not enough room there, I think, to put in the extra two lanes unless you have to do significant site work also.
Build a bridge or something, you know.
I think you would certainly be into the concrete jumping boots.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. That would probably be, I would think, probably just as much money.
Boden College, Pinkerton Academy have lanes seven and eight on the inside of lane one.
Yeah. So I, in, in terms of the budgeting process and the solutions, I appreciate the question. I'm just not sure this is the place to solution it. I, I would rather leave the team to, to try to explore.
Well, but it's a logistical question. I mean, he just came up with an idea that was moving the, the two lanes on the inside is an option that we hadn't really talked about, that that might be some, I mean, you know, I don't know if it's feasible, but it could save us money as the overall costs of this.
We, we did discuss that, and the, the issue again is because they, they run the longer events around the oval, if you have the two lanes on the inside, it means you'll have to come up with some type of a barrier or something to place down there when they do the oval events, which is something that a student could actually trip over and sprain their ankle. I, I know they do that in a lot of indoor tracks, at Dartmouth College on the indoor track, they have an eight lane straightaway, and they have a six lane oval. And after they close the straightaway, they bring these aluminum barriers out there that are about four square inches, and they put them out there, and we'd have to do the same thing because then you would have kids wandering into lane, the other lane, and they'd be disqualified. If they come off the corner and they don't stay where they're supposed to stay, the official's going to disqualify the kid because the kid gained an advantage and actually cut his route a little bit shorter. So that, everything creates problems.
It's very non-traditional.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Superintendent?
What I would like to ask, simply because we have another meeting on the seventeenth of November, and you've given us a direction tonight, other than putting everything that we've talked about in print, I think it's very important for you to have a graphic, if possible, a drawing, important for you to have the numbers laid out, the two hundred and ninety and the four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so you can clearly see what does that include, because we verbalize it tonight. The whole point tonight was dialogue, which we've done. In addition to that, is there any other information that we could acquire together, separate or whatever, between now and the seventeenth of November? Because you're going to be handed the budget in December, December first, which does not mean that the discussion can't go on, but we're going to put some elements of this in the budget. And what I'd like to do is be gathering whatever else you would need to help you.
Does anybody need anything other than what the superintendent suggested?
I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Just put it down in writing.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Great. Gentlemen, I want to thank you for the, the informative discussion, and I very much appreciate not only the time you took tonight, but I, I know that this is something that's been discussed at length as well offline, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night. That takes us now to item number six, first reading of policy, Dr. Mark McLaughlin and Nancy Rose, the student use of information technology.
I'm going to join Nancy up front, I'll be right.
Great.
So tonight, you recall that last year we brought you our employee use of information technology policy, and at that time, we promised you that we'd come back with a student use of technology policy as well. And so we're pleased to share the first draft with you tonight. I'm just going to say a few words and ask Nancy to speak as well, and then we're going to read the policy to you, and then happily open up to any questions that you may have. I think it's important to say that both of these policies are modeled on responsible use. We had a lot of conversations at the, at the previous policy about responsible use and what that means. And this one likewise is modeled on that as well. And then the second thing I'd like to mention is that both recognize that in a twenty-first century technology environment, we have to optimize its use, the use of technology, for educational purposes, and then guide student behavior to use technology responsibly. So those two things are really part of the spirit of what we've tried to put together for you. I just asked Nancy if she'd have any other points you'd like to raise.
No, I was going to mention that it was aligned to the employee policy, which we did last year, the focus on responsibility regarding the use of information technology that is either in or related to school, which is another shift that was seen with the employee policy. It isn't just district owned network and district owned devices. It's your way of being, using technology around school, regarding school, and also that allows the district to provide a safe and secure learning environment, which then alludes to the anti-bullying policy, which is a crossover, an area of big concern in this day and age with social media, texting, all of the things that are becoming more and more of a concern. And then I would say that this policy has more of an emphasis on the use of different kinds of web resources and starting to get into using accounts, which is sort of where when we're looking at going into cloud computing or online anything, accounts go with that. So that's a change for the district too. That's all I had to add. The student use of information technology. Introduction. The Merrimack School District recognizes that information technology is a tool that, when responsibly applied, enhances the classroom experience and extends learning beyond the school walls. With information technology saturating nearly every aspect of our lives, it is incumbent upon the district to provide the members of the school community with an understanding of what the district considers to be appropriate use of information technology by students. While this policy is intended to provide guidelines for responsible use of information technology, it cannot cover all possible uses. When using district provided information technology, students must demonstrate the same level of responsibility and appropriate behavior as they would in using any other district resource. Students must also recognize that their personal online conduct, whether or not it utilizes district provided information technology, may have implications in school and school affiliated activities. Definitions. Number one, district information technology. District information technology includes all Merrimack School District computers, computing devices, software, servers, desk phones, cell phones, and network and internet connectivity. District related activities. District related activities includes any matter pertaining to schools, students, instruction, school and student events, co-curricular activities and clubs, outings or trips, or any other matters involving district operations. Guidelines for responsible use of district information technology. The following guidelines are intended to establish the parameters of responsible use of information technology in the district. In addition, students are expected to comply with all rules and policies of the school and the Merrimack School District, including the code of conduct set forth below, and all school related communication and online activity. Students demonstrating responsible use of technology will, one, comply with all applicable laws and regulations, such as copyright laws and fair use guidelines. Two, as available, use district provided communication systems, for example, School World, school email, when communicating with staff and faculty regarding schoolwork, activities or events, and limit such use to school related matters. Number three, recognize that district information technology is intended to support the educational mission of the district. Given the limited nature of some technology resources, such as computers and bandwidth, priority will be given to school related use. A, school provided accounts may be used for instruction, registration on thirty, third-party sites licensed or selected by district educators, and communication regarding district related activities. Conduct all school related communication, I'm sorry, four, conduct all school related communication in a respectful, appropriate, and responsible manner at all times. This extends to all communication, whether electronic or in print, and all representation of the school regardless of venue or occasion. Five, protect privacy of fellow students on all communications. Six, request technical assistance and report misuse, abuse, or problems with district information technology or related district equipment to the appropriate technology staff immediately upon discovery. Seven, help maintain the integrity of district technology by not engaging in the following activities or those of a similar nature, and by reporting any knowledge of such activity by others. A, using or attempting to use others' credentials, identities, passwords, or logins. B, hacking. C, adding unauthorized software to district systems. D, disabling or attempting to disable the district's filtering or, or blocking technology. E, intentionally or maliciously damaging district computers or technology devices, or causing disruption or interruption to district network internet systems. F, using, using or misusing district resources, especially bandwidth when directed not to.
Code of Conduct, prohibited activities. All students using district information technology are responsible for complying with the following rules of conduct, and must understand that the ability to access is not permission to access. Number one, do not use district information technology to find, view, or distribute threatening, harassing, discriminatory, defamatory, sexually explicit, obscene, pornographic, violent, or otherwise inappropriate material. Two, do not use district information technology for private, financial, or commercial purposes, or as a forum for communicating the views of or for soliciting membership, support, or contributions in or to any non-school sponsored or non-school recognized group or organization. Three, do not access or attempt to access unauthorized websites, or access or attempt to access files, folders, or other systems of other, either deliberately or accidentally, such as when a user does not log out of a computer or application unless authorized to do so. Cautions to users of district information technology. District information technology is the property of the district and remains under the control, custody, and supervision of the district. Information contained on or transmitted through the district server or network is not private, and the district reserves the right to monitor and inspect all student use of district information technology, even if conducted after school hours and off school premises. Two, any electronic communication pertaining to school related matters is subject to this policy and then may be considered a public record, regardless of the device or network used. Personal computers and other technology devices used for school related matters may be subject to inspection by the district. Three, the Merrimack School District is not responsible for any loss of data due to circumstances beyond its control or from users' error or omissions. The district is not responsible for loss, damage, or theft of personally owned electronic devices. The use of information technology in the district is a right that comes with responsibility. Inappropriate use may result in the curtailment of that right. District administrators or their designees shall make all decisions regarding whether or not a user has violated these guidelines, and may deny, revoke, or suspend, suspend access at any time. Five, any student who fails to comply with the guidelines for responsible use or violates the code of conduct set forth in this policy will be subject to disciplinary action in accordance to the district policy on student conduct, discipline, and due process, safe school zone, and individual school discipline procedures, and depending on the nature of the violation, may also be referred to law enforcement. Student use of social media. The Merrimack School District recognizes that social media in all its forms and iterations, for example, blogs, MS three six five, Facebook, Twitter, Tumblr, YouTube, et cetera, can be an important tool of education and communication. As such, its availability as a resource is understood as just one component of the district's overall educational mission. However, any use of social media by a student for school related purposes must be consistent with the expectations set forth in this policy. Toward this end, students must use appropriate online behavior, including proper interactions with others on social networking websites, follow district policies regarding student use of information technology, strive to protect the privacy of fellow students, understand that what is posted online can be captured and stored, not post material that could be considered malicious, obscene, threatening, harassing, or disparaging towards fellow students, district staff, and volunteers, or parents. In addition to adhering to this policy, students are also required to follow the district policy on. policy on pupil safety and violence prevention, bullying. Students must recognize that any online incident, whether or not it occurs outside of school, that impacts the ability of the district to provide a safe, secure, and peaceful environment for all students, will be addressed according to school, district, and/or legal disciplinary procedures. Remember that personal postings shared on the internet through text or other digital communication may be forwarded, shared, or published without the owner's knowledge, and could become viewable by unintended audiences, such as students, educators, parents, employers, and college recruiters. Therefore, it is important to portray a respectable image at all times. We're happy to take any questions that you have this time.
Wonderful. Questions from the board. Hands are up everywhere. Mr. Snyder, I'll start with you.
This is a randomized search down the line here. Okay, so I've read this three times now, once by listening to you and twice by looking myself. Does this entail any device that a student uses for anything that might be construed as part of their school activity, whether it's writing papers, submitting papers, or anything? Because that borderline of when it's their own devices in their own home versus in the school, using the district resources, I wasn't picking that up, so.
So I'll ask Nancy to jump in, but if we think in terms of the focus on responsible behavior, then the behavior is what triggers the policy, not necessarily the tool. So any use of a tool that causes, you know, behaviors that are damaging would be subject to this policy.
So this is attempting to sort of take the responsible usage and the responsible communicating with others to the electronic level through social media, as well as the resources the school may provide in. So I mean, it's clear-cut when you're using district resources, certain guidelines you must follow. But for me, the difficult part is going to be when they're on their own home computer or their own phone, using wireless signals or whatever, how this policy can be enforced or supported or whatever, and where the line is drawn between, you know, treating somebody's— you know, it talks about confidentiality of student, you know, versus where that would be taken up by this policy versus whether, you know, where that is. It's—I just—it's not a laughing matter because it's very serious, but on the other hand, I'm trying to figure out where people like civil liberties and stuff would come into play, given this sort of a policy. I mean, where's that line drawn, so?
That's why there's a cross-reference to the anti-bullying law, which is that the district seeks to provide the safe and secure environment. So any incident of bullying that occurs outside of the school district that impacts the district environment then can be addressed by the school district, because the district states that it seeks to provide a safe and secure environment. And so because of that, if the bullying or the incident were to occur, like a sexting incident or something like that, on a Saturday with a home cellphone on Verizon, but it caused disruption on Monday, then that becomes an incident that can be investigated. That's really where the crossover occurs. If they're at school doing something on school grounds that is causing an issue, whether it's with their own device and with Verizon, it's the behavior, not the device, that's at issue. And so I wouldn't want a student to stand behind, "Well, I did this with my own cellphone, so it's okay," which is the same thing with the staff policy as well.
Right, but I guess—you're right. I under—that is probably the more clear-cut example, because it really—it extends to anti-bullying and everything. It really makes it clear regardless of where you're at. But my question is, are there other behaviors that fall outside the scope of bullying, you know, like, you know, using social media for personal financial gain, referring to the fact you're going to be selling something at, you know, the school track meet or something like that? I mean, I'm just imagining on the fly things that could be used through social media, trying to take financial advantage in a situation where maybe it's not appropriate or something. It's just—trying to get my head around it has been difficult, because it's pretty broad-reaching, the way we're trying to do this.
I think the way that I have always looked at working on the policy is to take the technology out of the picture. So if the activity is something that would be forbidden, whether they conveyed it through posters or technology, then the technology isn't the issue, but I think it can be easy to construe that because it was done with technology that was not owned by the district, it would be okay. So it's really just—it's more about responsibly using the technology regardless of where you are, and also to sort of make it understand—make it understood that even if you're doing something outside of the school district or outside of the time of the school district, if it impacts the environment, you can be held responsible, or that can come up. So that's really—it is—it's very difficult, though, and also thinking about moving forward where, you know, half of—or I would say more than half of—the communication that students do now is through texting all the time, that those incidences are likely to crop up, and it could start at home in the morning at 6:00, and it could go straight through the day. The entire situation may be an incident that's looked at as one.
Exactly, and I'll just close now, but I mean, basically, it's just the—you seem to be tackling a very lar—I mean, I understand the intent, but it seems very large in how you put the boundary fence around this one's—through the policy, it seems to be difficult, but.
I don't think there is a boundary fence. I think that's part of the trickiness of it.
Yeah, I know.
Also, Ms. Gualyumi.
Just a couple of comments. I think there's a lot of really good stuff in this. I think you touched on the, like you said, the behavior, as well as kind of the disciplinary action that would apply and possibly criminal in certain situations. There were a couple of things that—I guess maybe a little bit about what Andy had said was like something like, for example, retail shopping, you know, eBay, you know, paying for music, or, you know, maybe—I wasn't really sure how—I guess it may be appropriateness, or maybe that needed to be more clearly spelled out or added, just to feed—just to constructive thought. I don't know if it's covered or if it could be more defined, but that was one thing. And again, I think this is really good. Secondly would be maybe the use of the thumb drive, you know, or the downloading of, you know, using—a putting something onto—that you can walk away and carry the data, maybe something a little—it maybe we need more boundaries around it or not, but it's just a matter of the exporting onto a thumb drive. I mean, sometimes there's policies around that, and I'm not sure if that's something that makes sense to put in here.
In a student policy, I'm not sure what they would have access to.
Would they get computers? So I'm imagining if there's laptops that they're using, someone sticks a thumb drive in there, and who knows what's on it, but you can get a lot of information pretty quickly and walk away with it. Is it maybe a very—the most likely scenario? Probably not, but is there risk with it?
That would be the same as if they emailed it to themselves. So it would be theft if it was something that they weren't supposed to have access to, but the device isn't as much as the intent.
Yep, no. But those were just a couple of comments I had just in—just off the top of my head, and after reviewing it a couple of times, a couple of things I thought of.
I think in the corporate world, policies against thumb drives and whatnot as well are less about what information is going to walk away on the thumb drive versus what's going to come into the environment on that drive in terms of a virus or something like that. Yeah, but it's interesting, right? In a world that's moving to the cloud and sharing information, that even the thumb drive or a disk is sort of a concept that's sort of disappearing.
What was that second thing?
Yeah. Sorry, I dated myself, did I? Any other questions? Vice Chair Barnes.
I'm going to go straight to the legal questions. Has this been reviewed by an attorney at the New Hampshire School Boards Association?
Not by NHSBA, but there are a number of legal references here that are noted. I don't believe the employee use has been vetted—had been vetted by—
Oh, okay. Student use. This is student.
No, I know. I'm saying the employee use had been vetted by the attorney, so this one has not.
I think you need to, and I'll explain why. Barrett Christine, at the last New Hampshire School Boards Association Board meeting, discussed the access—the legal rights to access personal devices of students without something like a court order or a warrant. And that has come up in the last year. So even since we've done this policy, that has come up. It's actually the area I'm going to ask you to focus on is cautions to users, item number two, and I think that this might not pass muster with some legal renderings that are going on.
Thank you.
If Barrett saw it, and he was clean with it, that's one thing, and I don't like playing armchair attorney, I'd rather he read it.
I think it's the beauty of the three-time review. We've got plenty of time, and so this is called—we're starting somewhere.
Absolutely.
Getting it on the table.
So that's the one area I'm looking at that would—that would—I think he can add value to the whole thing, but that's one area where I think you might find there may be some concern. So the rest of it, I think, you know, I'm on board with what you guys are saying, and I think it's exactly a perfect extension of our technology use policy from last year, so—but that's the one area where I think that districts have been having a challenge, was that one spot, and we should take a look under the hood.
Thank you.
I dare say that's an evolving area, too.
Absolutely.
As cases come up, so.
Mr. Powell.
Thank you. You're welcome. This may be more of a semantics issue, and please tell me if I'm way off in left field. Caution to users, number four, talking about the use of information technology in the district as a right. I would view it as a privilege and not a right, and I don't know if we need to change the wording there.
We deliberately changed it in the employee policy to a right, because we do want—
Did we?
Yes. We want them to use it in their work and in their instruction and as a student. So seeking it as something that they're entitled to do, but can lose or have that right encroached upon them.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is that it's understood that just because it's a right, and I think you did capture that in here, but I appreciate you bringing that, revisiting that with the employee policy. I'd forgotten that we had done that. So other than that, I think it's a great document for first run, to be honest with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder.
No, I just wanted to say that I think what Shannon noted captured the essence of what I was trying to do, because the—whenever you talk about something that somebody else has authored, if it's on their own device, if it's on a thumb drive, like you described or whatever, trying to be able to obtain that and be able to then use that as evidence or whatever is difficult to do. And when it's in social media, it's one thing, but if it's an email or whatever, tracking down where the source and things like that, it's—that's where I see the gray areas of coming. So getting a legal representation on that and just all the different parts is—I think is going to be good.
So I agree with some of the comments that other board members have had. I think this is probably one of the cleanest first readings of policy that I've been involved with. It's very solid. As Ms. Barnes mentions, you know, legal review and others to take a look at it makes perfect sense. I did have a couple of questions. I was hoping you could clarify for me. On page two, the Code of Conduct prohibited activities, number one says, "Do not use district information technology to find, view, or distribute threatening, harassing, discriminatory, defamatory, sexually explicit, obscene, pornographic, violent, or otherwise inappropriate material." And then number three says, "Do not access or attempt to access unauthorized websites." And so my first inclination was, well, what's unauthorized? What's the definition of unauthorized? And is it not covered by everything laid out in number one?
Kind of.
Okay.
But the separation there really is—games tend to be blocked as a rule, simply because they tend to be so riddled with malware, but occasionally we get requested to open them, and then that may add a site that we may or may not want there.
Okay.
So it's more if it should—like, not that it's obscene, or abusive, or criminal, but more not good for the computers.
Right, right. Okay, so that's helpful. That clarifies and makes sense. The other question I have is, on page three of four, the bullet there, "Use appropriate online behavior, including proper interactions with others on social networking sites." The words appropriate and proper are similarly interpretable, right? And so defining what's appropriate and inappropriate, and proper and improper is perhaps in the eye of the beholder, or at least there's gray area, right? How do we envision dealing with that?
So back to the legal reference, much of this is derived from the employee use of technology policy, which was vetted by attorneys, and that issue of appropriate and proper came up prior. And you recall in our conversations then, we were struggling with how tightly we define certain things, because as soon as they get defined and there is an action that, you know, breaches that definition, then maybe it's okay, because we didn't itemize it here. And so what our guidance was at the time was appropriate and proper is cross-referenced in other policies that we have, like bullying, or, you know, those behaviors that sort of define those terms. But we were counseled at that time by legal to not overdefine in the policy terms like that.
Would a reasonable, sane person consider it to be proper or improper?
Right.
I also like to put this into context, where I look at this as the document that guides the students, but also instruction and development of handbooks and the teaching of digital citizenship. So it isn't that you get one chance to be appropriate, and then if you don't get it right, you're done. You know, it's more—we want you to behave appropriately. Well, I don't know what that looks like. There's a learning opportunity. That becomes the opportunity for the student to be—to be brought along, and it's the same for staff. It's honestly, you know, you don't want a gotcha policy, so that one mistake is the only one that you get to make. So I see that as then—for the tech educators and librarians and teachers to be then saying to the students, starting in kindergarten, "Appropriate behavior online means da-da-da-da." And so that they're learning that, and that becomes sort of a mantra for them, and they get it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Yeah. So that takes us to item number seven, O'Gara Tennis Court Study. Vice Chair Barnes.
I know that—I pretty much alluded to the intent of tonight's agenda item at our last meeting, so I just want to keep it to the point. And in light of our recent joint meeting with the town council, I made some calls to try to get some information on our tennis courts. We heard—we heard there was a reference that there was a professional engineering opinion that tennis courts don't belong on O'Gara—our O'Gara Drive site. Neither the town of Merrimack nor the school district possesses the documentation of this opinion. That being said, I think that we need to take a fresh look at the O'Gara site overall. And that includes its existing usage, its maintenance, its management plan, and its future. The place we should begin is with an engineering study of this site, its landscape, and the appropriate facilities, based on what the current facilities are built on. We should look at the layout of the facility, such as the ice rink being out of sight and unlit, located behind the skate park, and parking issues, such as the unpaid lots flooding and puddling constantly due to the lack of regular grading. Based on the timing of budgets and the tasks that we're facing for 2015, '16, I feel we need one more joint meeting with the town council in the spring that goes into detail on how we can move forward in this area and return it to a quality, useful activity destination for our students and for our community. By having this discussion in the spring, we can plan for our CIP, for any district responsibilities regarding the long-term management of the site. So I suggest that we propose to jointly engage Keen, Nordstrom Associates to do a study based on the successful projects that they've done for both the town and the district, with the intent to cosponsor the study with our town council.
Okay. Is there comment from the board? Mr. Powell.
Is that a motion? I mean, what would be appropriate at this point?
Well, at this point, I think we've had at least three, maybe four, joint meetings where we've discussed the courts, and we know where it's at, we know—but we don't know where we're going. So what I think we need to do is—is whether it be a motion to have a joint meeting with this being the top of the agenda, yeah, I think that's appropriate, where we would host the spring meeting. So it would be not discussing the '15, '16 budget, but clearly the '16, '17 budget and going forth, because we do have this agreement until 2018, but we don't want to wait until 2018 to even start considering what we should do next. So I think we need—now that we've talked about what is, what's happening, what's not happening, let's talk about what we should be doing, what's there, and how we should make a positive move forward with it. let's talk about what we should be doing, what's there, and, and how we should make a positive move forward with it. So I moved, if you'd like me to make the motion, it would be that we have a joint meeting in the spring to focus on what we can do to better this area and engage professional engineers to come up with a, a long-term strategy for this.
Is there a second to the motion made by Ms. Gualyumi? Do you want to speak further to it?
I think I really did, so if you'd like to.
Further discussion?
I would just say that I, I think that ongoing discussion with town council is a good idea, and twice a year, I think is appropriate. And I think this is certainly a, an issue that we've been discussing with them over time. And I think to be able to work with them or to coordinate a plan the best that we can for the use of that property, I think makes sense that we partner with them and how to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. My only question would be, I know that at our last joint meeting, the council indicated that the town manager had gone to the state to talk about this. And I think that it behooves us to not have that meeting until they hear back from the state. So, I mean, we, we can pick a date in the spring, but I think that one of the gating factors ought to be at least here, the original response from the state as, as far as what their question was.
Right. Vice Chair Barnes?
I just, I'm sorry. I just want to respond to Andy's point, and that being that if we meet in the spring and we do decide to do with a joint engineering study of the site and everything else, we still need that. If we decide to go forth with budgets in the fall, it's going to give them time to do that study. If we wait until after the summer goes, we're going to be starting to hit into school year and budgets. So I was looking at the spring for that very specific reason, so I wanted to give you that insight.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
Where, so if I understand you correctly, you, I, I agree with Andy. I think it's a great idea that we, that we do continue the dialogue, the open dialogue with him. But you said that you, you want to encourage them to enter into a joint study. When do you envision that that study would take place?
I think the study should take place, while saying that we agree to it or don't agree to it, I think it needs to happen next summer, so that we can look at, at the fall. We have to look, and every fall, probably about September, October is when we look at our CIP. So really, September, we look at our CIP. If we need to integrate any projects into the CIP, based on, you know, where this goes, then, then we need to have the right information to do that.
So by next summer, you mean summer of '15?
Summer '15, so that we can plan for our CIP starting fall of '15.
Which means we would have to have money for this study in this upcoming budget, in '15, '16, or in, yeah, '15, '16.
Well, I look at the fact that we have consultants coming all the time for maintenance issues.
Whoa, wait a minute. We, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Summer of '15 would still be the current year that we're in now.
It'd be, July 1st is the middle of it, so.
Right, so.
We could, we could budget '15, '16, we could budget, but the prob, what I'm saying is, do we need to budget if we have consultants come in to evaluate our facilities all the time for safety and usage? I look at it along those same lines. If we need a consultant to come in to do that, we do that. And I'm guessing it's about a couple thousand dollars, based upon some, you know, past experience we've had. We're not talking, we're not talking gazillions here.
Well, it is an unknown, but I'd have to disagree, because we just, we just got the site study, and we had to budget for that a year in advance. So I, I think it is, you know, we can't just decide where to pull the money from. It, it has, I think something like this has to be earmarked in the, in the budget. And, and if that's the case, I'm not in favor of putting any money like that towards, towards that in this coming budget. I think what Andy said was, was very pertinent, that they've told us that they've contacted the state, and unfortunately, they haven't gotten an answer back that we know of. We have to wait until that process happens, because we, we don't have any say in this whole process until the lease comes up for renewal. We, or the easement, rather. We've basically signed over our rights to that property, to the town, and the town has to deal with the state or the federal government or whoever it is to hold up their end of the bargain with that entity, as far as whether they decide to create other recreational space elsewhere in the town or whatever. We, we really can't dictate to them what they should be doing with that space. And, and I just think that, that it would be unfeasible for us to spend any money towards any kind of survey when we really don't have a, a say in it.
Vice Chair Barnes?
I think the goal is not to dictate anything. The goal is to openly communicate and work together toward a mutually beneficial end. And this has gone on for three years, and we have not gotten any vision of what a mutually beneficial end will look like. I think that the less we do to find out what that would be, find out what, you know, what our facilities should sustain, the more we're going to sit here and spin our wheels and not, it's not going to get better. I mean, we look at our facilities right now, and they can only depreciate without, without a plan and attention to that plan. And so right now, I think having a, a partnership and working as partners with them, instead of being told what, you know, what our rights aren't, I think it's about what, what's best for all, and that's, that's collaboration. That's not dictation, in my personal opinion. And I'm hoping the council feels the same way.
Mr. Powell?
Maybe dictation, dictating was the wrong term. I, I hear what you're saying as far as collaboration. The point I was trying to get across is that we have no say whatsoever in what's done with that piece of property right now, until the easement comes up for renewal and we decide to not renew it and take it back. That's the only time that we're going to have a say in this, and that's, that's what I was trying to get at. Not necessarily that we're telling them what to do, just that we, we really have, and I'm just repeating myself, no say in what is going to happen on that property until, if, and, if, if such time that we get that easement back.
Mr. Snyder?
You know, the more I think of this, and the more that I look at the timeline, really what we're doing is we're doing in-game planning for when the, when it expires in 2018, because we know that there's a, the tennis courts that are there, something has to be done, whether they could be there or not. But there's other things around it, such as the skate park and, as, as well as the tennis and the ice skating rink and stuff, that I think the town doesn't want to lose, that are all seem to be sort of covered into this, this agreement. So it's more than just arm wrestling over the tennis courts and what should be done. It's more the, the whole use of the area that we've got to really have a good, frank, open discussion about. I think it's healthy for the district to understand at some point what it would cost, and if it's feasible to put tennis courts there. You know, getting that and have the town jointly look at the land there, I guess, it's okay. But to me, if we're going to have a fruitful conversation with the town council, we have to take it, a step approach to let them follow through, follow through with their next step, hear what the results are, have them report, I mean, they committed they would report back to us on what they heard. I mean, they said, they said, "We can't say now because we haven't heard, therefore, we want to make sure that we hear back. So let's make sure the next time we meet and talk about this topic, we, they have heard back." And then we have the discussion about whether it's in April, whether it's in May. I mean, I understand the need to want to do it over the summer, but I don't know that we would get a buy-in from the town council to, to jointly do this if they haven't heard back from the state yet. So, that's my only.
Vice Chair Barnes?
Well, I think that's the point. We need to have a meeting in the spring, find out what their intents are, find out, you know, and, and go from there. And I think you hit the nail on the head, Andy. We do have a lot more than those tennis courts. The ice rink has nothing to do with our physical education program. The skate park has nothing to do with our physical education program. The basketball courts that are there are not used for our physical education program. So it's, it's a, it's a broken record. We have other courts that are used for, for district purposes. Those are community resources. They're on school property. We can look at the assets around it, too. We can look at things like the fencing that's there, and it's school fencing. We own the fence. It's on our property. It's being, the management's being loaned to the town, but the town may want the fence for, say, the dog park. We can find areas of common ground, but we need that, that dialogue about what's best for the long term. We're not doing that right now. We're talking about what we're not doing. We're, we're not talking about maintenance. We're not talking about upkeep. And I think we need to just get back to the table, have the dialogue, but stop talking about what is and start, start talking about what is best. And we haven't had that discussion. I think it's, I think we're ready.
Any further discussion? I'm supportive of meeting more frequently with the council. I think for as long as I've been on the board, we've talked at our meetings about trying to get together twice a year and have actually, in, in my time on the board, gotten together only every two years. And I think that, that we can, we can certainly do that. There are a variety of reasons for that. As it relates to the courts, I agree with an awful lot of what Mr. Powell said, and the fact that we have granted an easement forty years ago, roughly, to the town that had a desire to put tennis courts on the property. They then went and got a grant and were able to put the courts there. That agreement is between them and the, the feds and, and the state, and it allows for an alternate use. Now, the courts had been kept in disrepair for a long time, and this board did its fiduciary responsibility in looking at the easement agreement, one that nobody at this table had a hand in, but that looked after our interests and said the property was not being kept up to the standard. And at this board's direction, I took that to the council. The council understood the situation and took action. The decision they made was their decision, in my mind, which was, "We don't want to continue to invest in tennis courts at the site. We have an option available to us to look at alternate uses, and we will pursue that and get back to you." At our last joint meeting, they gave us an update. They said the site was visited, and they're waiting for guidance from the state. I think, I, I understand the frustration, but I think that since we've done that, the council has done everything that they've asked to, to the best of their ability. The fact that they're waiting on the state, I, I don't see as there's. When we asked for appropriate timeframes for an update, I believe Mr. McCallie said roughly six months is when he would hope to hear. So a March meeting date for a joint meeting might actually be a very good time in order to get an update from them. But I do think in terms of the agreement, the other thing to keep in mind is, the agreement also states that the property be returned to us in a pristine usable fashion, clean usable fashion. So whatever is to happen between now and 2018 with that site, we, we have, again, some, some recourse and, and some say in that. And at 2018, if there's going to be some sort of a turnover of that land, there's nothing that says that another easement agreement couldn't be struck for the parcel that contains the basketball courts, the skate park, and the rink, minus the, the tennis court property, right, which the district could then do. And so in my mind, the, a study of the property is really pertinent to us as it relates to 2018, a, as opposed to in the coming months. So I'll support the motion on the basis of making a request to the town council chair for a meeting in six months' time, in March, roughly. The study, I, I'm not convinced we, we necessarily need in the near term. I see that as a longer-term issue. So with that, we can put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? None? The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. And I neglected, I happened to skip something on the agenda. Number seven, the guaranteed maximum insurance rate for 2015, 2016. Business Administrator Chevyn L.
Thank you very much. As you know, at this time, we usually get a guaranteed maximum health insurance rate by the health insurance trust, so we can start building our operating budget. It's one of the key components of it, as it is, does make up quite a significant percentage of our budget. Right now, currently, we're looking at an overall 4.4% increase in the operating budget, in the operating budget in the health insurance line. And that's our guaranteed maximum rate that we'll budget for when creating the '15, '16 budget. And then come April, we'll get either it's 4.4 or it's less than that, and we'll have some good news. But that's where we stand right now on that issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Snyder?
What was the GMR last year, last year?
I think it was pretty close to that.
Was it that close?
Yeah.
So the, it was, the nine percent was like the year before that or something like that?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Thanks.
It's very good news. So that now takes us to item number nine, other correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Vice Chair Barnes?
I got an email from a citizen that was looking to have a regular volleyball group come to use one of our buildings. Have you got that, too?
Everybody got that.
Did we all get it individually? Because I only saw my name, sorry. So, well, then you could have done this. But since I'm on a roll, so refer them to the maintenance for the proper policies and procedures.
Mr. Powell?
Yeah, I think we all received an email from a parent regarding a bus stop on Lennon Way, and I responded to her, referring her to, to Matt to set up a meeting of the bus stop committee, so that's underway.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? Okay. Seeing none. Comments? Any comments from the board? All right, seeing none. Number nine, new business. Any new business to come for the board? Which takes us now to item number 10, committee reports. We'll start here. Vice Chair Barnes?
The district parent group met last Wednesday. We recapped fundraisers year-to-date. There's a lot of comparative analysis of what we're doing, areas where there are parallel, areas where there are unique events. Some, especially where there are parallels, where some are getting more, I guess, dollars per household than others. And then, of course, the middle school going a different direction with the no fundraiser, fundraiser, just getting straight donations to never see a catalog, which is also going quite well. It's actually, I guess they're doing, they've done as much so far this year than they did all of last year. So it's, it's going well. So go middle school. And Greater Wood Subcommittee was scheduled to meet on the 21st. We all got there and realized we failed to meet quorum, so there was nothing discussed. And, oh, the other thing about district parent group, I forgot about that. Talking about future topics for the year, because this is the first meeting of the year. So where money from fundraisers go, and also, you know, so parents can learn, and the different schools can learn more about vocational technical programs. So those are two areas we're going to look to explore this school year.
Mr. Powell?
The Epic Committee met, education, I can't even remember what the acronym is, it's so late. The first evaluator training session is going to take place on November 12th, 13th, and 14th. And educator, educator training is expected to begin in December. There were some modifications, minimal modifications to the tool and the process that were suggested as part of the spring pilot. It came out of the spring pilot, and those modifications have been made. And a final review of these modifications will occur later on this month. So things are happening.
Great. Mr. Snyder?
On October 27th, the Planning and Building Committee met. They were presented or were given ahead of time a copy of the NESDEC report. They went over a little, they went over the charge that we gave them around the, to evaluate, sort of add in the dimension that the report recommended around the SPED and Master Colwell Middle School, and to take that as well as to update anything in their current report or looking at existing space utilization that might be outdated. I won't go into the way the discussion- I won't go into the way the discussions went on it, but there was, uh, a little resistance in terms of, uh, doing some of the, the items, but I, I'm hoping that the, the members or that, that Rich and the team come through with approximate numbers so we can get a scope and scale. There was question, a lot of question about whether the square foot anal, analysis was accurate in terms of what was required versus what was available. So that's one of the things I asked them to clarify as part of this as well. So, um, hope, they're, they're working towards that now. They meet, so we're meeting tonight. They meet on the 10th. Um, I believe that they're going to re, request an agenda item at our meeting on the 17th. Um, sent a heads up in case he hasn't done it yet. Um, to sort of give an update of the approach that they want to take, um, to look at the analysis. They're also, I asked them if they, and we'll talk about this at their meeting, um, on the 10th, but if there's anything that they need from the board, um, in support, um, of their process, to ask then. Um, and then, then they have another meeting on the 24th and they know that the, essentially all of the options that we've asked them to do, in particular that by early January is something that we need to be able to prepare any warrants. So, um, you know, I, I think we're making progress there. Again, we're going to be meeting twice this month and then they're going to be coming to here, um, on the 17th, so.
Thank you. Okay. That takes us to item number 11, public comments on agenda items. I guess Mr. Goodman's not interested. Uh, that takes us to item number 12. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by Vice Chair Barnes, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? There are none? The motion carries five, zero, zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.